I think what we had in mind is just the approval to go ahead and apply for the permit. But we need to talk to Kay during the break, I'd like to figure out how far along. Business-wise, that's all I've got. Couple of announcements, October 24th, the Bevill Center made in the cab. There'll be people from all over the county here, all in the business community, elected officials live there here. Big day for Rainville, I think they'll be proud. The first half of the day, high school seniors, I believe, from around the county that are coming in and making one of the vendors. Second half of the day, open to the public. Also on the 24th, we've got ACE Community Meeting, so 24th, 25th, the ACE team will be in Rainville doing their community assessments. They're wanting to meet or have a community-wide meeting on the 9th or 24th for more public input in addition to the assessment forms that have turned in earlier. Location of the meeting, we're not sure yet. Bevill Center has square dancers that night, so it's hard to break in on Thursday nights with that going on, but we'll find a suitable place. Maybe one of the churches or something, Lord Church. That's, I don't think I missed anything. All I got.
On the RDS agreement?
Yeah.
Is that something that we have to have signed today, tonight? I'd like for us to look at possibly seeing what the cost difference between the Alabama Department of Revenue and RDS is. All sales tax remittance is going to that one-step program in November? And if that's the case, all of the, whether it's collected by RDS or the Department of Revenue, is all going to be remitted the same way and the same channels? And just by looking at our budget from last year and the numbers, we paid right at 1.9% of our sales tax to RDS for their collection. And I don't have the firm numbers, but I talked to a council member from Fort Payne, and they use the Alabama Department of Revenue. And they're getting closer to 0.5% of their sales tax goes to Alabama Department of Revenue. And that, he said that that does include their audits. That might be a mechanism or a way which we can save a little bit of the taxpayer's money. Now, I know at one point in time that we did use the Alabama Department of Revenue for our sales tax collection, and that we had run into issues with them paying us on a timely basis. And from my understanding, that's where RDS really came to life, is they started, a private firm came in and started soliciting communities like ourselves. And at that point in time, there was a noticeable difference between their payment schedule and the Alabama Department of Revenue's. It kind of made sense at that point in time. From what I'm hearing now, the Alabama Department of Revenue has stepped it up a little bit and are on par with these private firms. Is there an appetite for looking at the options? Is there anybody else who would?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see the difference, for sure. Judy had mentioned in the past that the city had used the state, and they run into problems where getting the money on a timely basis, just like you mentioned. And sometimes that can be an issue in certain months of the year where we can get in a cash crunch, because RDS does remit pretty reliably on the 20th of the month, and sort of like a payday type bill. But yeah, if they could do it at a cheaper rate, I think we'd be crazy enough to compare and look. And this is the time to do it, because it's a great time.
Before we make the decision, I'd like to have the opportunity to go in and get some firm numbers from different options, and also talk with some of the city clerks that are using the Alabama Department of Revenue, and see what their standpoint is, because that's where the rubber meets the road, right there.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I do have something that we could spend money on this time. We have the proposed upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. These upgrades are detailed in here. To make this happen, we would have to do a USDA rule loan and apply for a grant associated with that entity. We're not guaranteed a certain percentage of a grant. The grants usually range from 25% of the loan value to 45% of the loan value. Of course, we would really prefer the 45% of the loan value, and then we'd only be borrowing 55%. In your packets here, I kind of put detailed what everything would be doing. We would be, this in total is going to be us building two leachate tanks and aerobic sludge digester. We will be upgrading the generator at the wastewater treatment plant to a 400 kilowatt generator, and it's replacing the existing 250-watt unit. Also, it'll be upgrading our pump stations at Highway 35 and Parker Avenue. They will be getting submersible pumps, wet wells, and generator size to handle the increased flows. Also, would be included in this project, a belt press. And with the belt press and the digester, it would drastically cut down on the amount of sludge that we produce at the wastewater treatment plant. Now, the key thing to this right here, that would make it financially viable, would be the additional revenue that we would get from the processing of the leachate from the landfill. And they have mentioned that they are willing to sign a 10-year agreement assuring that we get all of the leachate for that 10-year period. So I took the liberty on back of this little thing to lay out a couple of different 10-year projected sewer revenues, so you can see what the impact of both the additional debt services and the additional revenue would be. Also, you may notice on the debt services, around 2020, they decrease. We have a series of three bonds and state revolving fund loans that will be retired during that time period. So before long, we will have some of our debt services on the sewer side not be there. And I did three different projections. One with the conservative, that's the first one, that's where we would just be getting a 25% grant. The secondary one is the best-case scenario, where we'd be getting a 45% grant. And the third one is just with a small increase in charges to surrounding entities that use the sewer plant. Just so you can look at the different options available on there. This could be something that would help the sewer plant get to the point to where it's revenue neutral, it's not a drag on the sanitation department. That is something that I would like to bring up tonight, and at the same time, answer any questions while I've got Mr. Allen here, because he's a lot smarter than I am about this stuff.
You're not talking about bringing it to everybody tonight, are you?
If there's a willingness to do so, I'd like to, but if it's something that we need to wait two weeks and let everybody put their mind around, I understand that also.
I'd like to check out some of these numbers, and especially talk with Debbie about it, because to me, that's the real concern. When they do upgrades, the agreement, the 10-year agreement that we're relying on to help service that debt is just 10. The debt is going to be longer than 10 years. I just, I don't know, I need to talk to her about it, and that's just my feelings on it. I guess get an idea of where we would be sitting at 10 years from now, debt-wise, if for some reason, the end of that agreement, the relationship didn't continue.
It would be fairly simple on that regard, on the projected issues on the leachate processing.
Yeah, but we still have the data.
Okay. And I intend on making a motion to declare October dyslexia awareness month.
The only thing I have is you should have received any packet about the community report, just call your team to do that. Appreciate what the guys are doing, but I don't have anything other than that.
We had our annual yard sale at the library, and we were able to raise $2,000 out of this year's yard sale, which I believe last year was $1,600. So, that's exciting, we got that much money. And from what I understand, that maybe goes towards anything concerning the children, correct? Rooming time, press, all that. So, I just want to thank all the library staff for taking all of this stuff out and being there on a Saturday and selling, and for all the patients that donated. There was a bunch of stuff out there. And then we also received a $3,000 LSTA grant for the library this year. This is a grant that we apply for. Is it every other year this one, or every year?
We apply for it every year, sometimes with your children, sometimes computers, whatever the needs. So, that's part of the money that the library has sufficiently brought in themselves, so we as a city appreciate you guys holding your own.
And that's a non-matching grant, isn't it?
Yes, that is free money.
Ms. Debbie's here also from the left. Yeah, she's in the back.
I had emailed back and forth with Carol Lee and Debbie and Baby to see what's the best way to handle the Imagination Library fund right now. And initially, we were just going to open up an account that would be separate, that would just be more restricted for the Imagination Library, that hopefully we will get started in 2014. We do have, which it'll be finalized at the end of this month, we have 501(c)(3) partner, which is the AMRBRCMB. And so technically, once they become our partner, we'll come into an agreement, and then they will have the account for us, and they'll help us with that. But right now, we're holding on to money that we've received for it. So, do we need to go ahead and open up a bank account, that restriction, and then we can just transfer that money in, or leave it as is until we get the 501(c)(3)?
How long will we talk about it?
Well, it could be a month, it could be a couple of months. We've been holding, this is my concern, is we've been holding on to this $500 check for at least two months.
August 7.
Since August. So, do we want to wait it out, or do we feel more comfortable depositing the money?
How much money, how much money is going to be flowing through, I guess is what?
Well, nothing will be flowing through right now.
It's just such a second?
It's just, so the money's in an account, because right now, we just have a check. So, I just?
So it's 500 even?
And then, I don't know if it's at this meeting that we'll be getting the $5,000 we were awarded, or if it will be, or if they set the date at that meeting, because that's what they wanted us to do, is to get a partner, and to see if anybody else in the community wanted to kind of join in, which there's, I mean, there's interest in the program. I don't think a whole lot of people understand what the program is. It's kind of a loner, because it's not kindergarten, because that's pretty much where the books stop giving sense, so under.
So, $5,500 total. I mean, could just put it in the general fund, just make a note that at that time...
There's some specific regulations for 501(c)(3) in common funds that they would fund, so we'll get that. What you said, in a trust account for the Imagination Library, that might be okay, but I've been kind of scared to tell you those funds, as long as it's not anything that's going to draw on, or something, you don't plan on paying me, you build a thing, this was just to get the 501(c)(3) authorization, so you can transfer it.
Yes.
So it would probably be okay if you were trusting it, separate from the general fund. And we probably need to check on the specific rules for 501(c)(3) transfers and things of that nature. I know you cannot make any kind of...
Donating to a nonprofit and all that. But I just don't, like, it makes me, really, to be honest, I forgot we were holding the check. I've just been like, great, we have money, let's get the partner at big, for us to just continue holding a check. I mean, I'm sure it's fine where it's sitting at, it's just...
I can see your concern, and I would want some third-party, a trust, you know, a trust account, holding on to it, so there's some accounting for that.
Right.
And so we can get that checked out.
Because I don't want my warrant to take up all the money, just to draw on. So, okay, so is that okay if I authorize, I guess it's the mayor and the clerk to open a bank account for Imagination Library?
Yeah, I don't know if that's the right way to handle it there, I think.
A restricted account? And we can, let me do that on a stipulation of maybe you checking into how we should appropriately do it. We like stipulations to do that. Because that way, our 501(c) pretty much handles the flow. The actual Imagination Library, they handle all the sending out the books and all that. This would just be us paying them on the money that we've already received. Okay, and then in the fire department, I would like to, we've got five total computers that we need to upgrade, because by the beginning of the year, all of them are going to pretty much be useless. Is that correct in my statement?
Yeah, they're running an old version of Windows that our reporting software company will no longer recognize.
So, what I've suggested to Chief Bridgeway that we do is maybe try to aim to fix two computers a month, so it's not all one whammy. And three computers would be under $1,000, is kind of what she said, correct?
They should all be under $1,000, if we do them all at one time.
All five of them under $1,000?
Because two of them can't be repaired, so...
Oh, I'm sorry to say that.
Two of the ones we got through the revenue department are not suitable to run our program. So she says she thought she could rob memory out of those to put in the ones we have and make them work.
So how many total can we upgrade?
We can upgrade five total for under $1,000.
The five computers total are under $1,000, okay.
We have seven of yours, she's going to rob memory out of two of them she can't fix.
So I'm going to say that we can maybe do two this month, and then maybe three next month to upgrade those.
And this is just getting a new version of Windows?
Windows 7.
So that it can collaborate with the software.
And we have to buy that for each individual computer?
Mine, Shana.
If we buy, the department buys a license, it can't, can it put it on each one of the pro-
We can get it for our department, the way I understand it, she can, which told me we don't have to buy civil license agreement for each computer, the way I understood.
How much?
When you buy those, they come, you can have a certain allotted amount that you're allowed to use computers for, normally.
What is Windows 7 for a municipality cost?
Oh, I have no idea. I mean, our situation, we've got three different platforms, home computers here, so we're trying to get everything under an operating system.
And then, Chief Bridgeway would also like to, and we had discussed this at a prior meeting, setting up a different shift mechanism, if you will, where there will be a captain on two of the ships, and then, of course, Chief Bridgeway would be the third supervisor, I guess you could say. So, right now, he would like to make Willie Wright one of the captains of the ship, and then Grant Wood would kind of be a pending captain upon Derek Summerford's return. So Summerford has seniority. If he chooses that he would like to be the captain, then he will, Grant will sit down, and Summerford will then be captain. If he chooses not to, Grant will continue, but we're figuring at least two to three months that Grant's going to have to cover.
Yeah, until the first of the year. Basically, what it is, federal laws, we can't pass firefighter Summerford over just because he's on guard duty. So, I really don't like having a conversation with somebody for a promotion over the telephone. It's just not good business. So, we won't wait for him to get back, which is coming back November 13th. Take him about a month to get acclimated back in the job again, and by the first of the year, the two candidates for the position will be firefighter Wood and firefighter Summerford. And we'd be able to sit down with both of the candidates, discuss with them in person, you know, the requirements of the job, and discuss, of course, their training history and that sort of thing, and then one of those two would be chosen for that position.
So, I would like this to take effect in the new payroll week, so that would be next Monday. Is that okay with you? That is in effect then, okay. And then Derek Husky will be, his title will be a firefighter. His pay will go to 11:05, starting October 14. Willie and Grant will be at 11:14 at the captain's bay, and this is all on the pay scale. We're still following the old pay scale, because we did nothing with that this year. And so I'll be making a motion to implement that. The Tom Bevill ward, we talked about how there are, we would like to change some of the locks to be different in our Tom Bevill Center. This would be an office and a storage closet, it's three total blocks, and that would be Tom Bevill checks on that for me, and it's $219. So, I'll be making a motion to do that, so that we can get those changed. And then also, there is a municipal law conference in Orange Beach coming up, and I think it would be a good idea for us to help Dara out in some of the cause for her going, she's already signed up to go. The registration is $220, and the fee for the hotel is $109 for three nights. So I don't know how the city has done it in the past, or what everybody thought about that. So I wanted to, I had talked to a couple of you, that this is the only attorney municipal law conference that is offered by the league. So what's everybody's thoughts?
Well, I'd like to have some more friends. Not that you, I'm not saying that you're not there, but I think it would be a benefit for us, I mean, it would only, I see this relationship going long-term, so it's just, I don't see any reason not to.
Well, I would like Dara to meet Tracy, Lori, and I never deal with the other ones.
Troy Lane.
Rob. Rob, okay, so, all right. Well, is that something that I need to make a motion for?
I would second it and vote for it, I can't speak if the others.
What is everybody's opinion on that? Is everybody good with that? Okay. Mr. Hall?
I agree with him. Has the city done it before?
Okay. And then I will be making a motion to go into executive session when we get through with our business, to discuss a legal matter. Sweetie, I'm sorry. It was not 40 minutes.
George, that clock is on 10 minutes.
I got one thing. We've been having some little power issues in the city park, and we had some events coming up, so we had to make a kind of an emergency repair to some power. We had a power panel that was probably undersized when they put it in a long time ago, so we upgraded that power panel in the city park and got it fixed now. So, we've been having trouble with the lights going out, plugins going out, all kind of issues. So we got that upgraded. It cost us $2,936, but it was a special kind of outdoor panel for power, for the breakers to go in, so we did have to get it repaired. So that's all the things I have.
Anybody got anything else? I had a, I thought of a couple of things I needed to announce for the meeting here. Wednesday, 11:00 a.m., EIS, the new tenant in the industrial park, having a grand opening. It'll be over lunch, serving a pretty big lunch, and hopefully have a good crowd there if you get a chance to go by. And then on the 14th, Columbus Day, City Hall will be open. I don't know about, I guess, I'm assuming all the other city services will be, but some places will be closed. We got closed for Columbus Day. I'm home, so it's, City Hall's open, so...
But I'm going to kevle it early, so...
Yeah. Nothing else?
Well, let's go ahead and make this announcement too, since we're, this Wednesday, at 10 o'clock, we have a ribbon cutting for ESP Specialty. It's located next to Oxy Med. Used to be the location that was Three Ladies and a Scrapbook. And at 3:00 p.m., Central Propane, which is across from Foodland, will also be having a ribbon cutting. We've got quite a few ribbon cuttings coming up, and we'd appreciate if everybody attended. It's not mandatory.
We'll take a 10-minute break. The meeting will come to order.
President.
Here. Let Better.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Langerfels.
Sure.
Judy, if you want to hit the minute, it's right there.
We have two sets of minutes. This, first one, December 16th, of the Labor and Council meeting. Mayor Colley, he's ordered, called the row. A motion was made to discuss the relief of the limits of Section 13, 2013, and we were at Council meeting in the section which was 2014, Special Call Council meeting, said that it's personally required, motion carried without in favor. Item 1, Mayor Johnson made a letter of resignation from Senator Trine. Eric Colley, after discussion, motion is made to accept this resignation as presumed. Motion carried without in favor. Item 2, a motion is made to purchase a 2002 car for the police department at a cost of $4,300. Motion carried without in favor. Item 3, a motion is made to purchase fuel reactors to be placed on the highway to identify fire hydrants throughout the city. Cost $1,300. Motion carried without in favor. Motion is made to pay the monthly bills, as presumed, you've got a city treasurer. Motion carried without in favor. And a motion is made to adjourn the 606B, and a motion carried in advance.
Together.
I'll make a motion that we accept those as read.
Motion by Graham to accept the minutes as read, second by Let Better. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
September 23rd, Special Call Council meeting. With proper notice being given, the Riceville Council, City Council made a special station on September 23rd at Pacquiao, at the Fire Hall. Special Call Council meeting, Mr. Point, Senator Trine. Mayor Johnson calling, meeting to order, and called the row. Mayor Johnson made a recommendation to appoint David Dawe, as Senator Trine, after discussion. A motion is made by Lady Better, and said to be by Freeman, to appoint Dara Patterson, as Senator Trine. Motion carried without in favor. A motion is made by Graham, and said to adjourn. Motion carried without in favor.
I'll make a motion that we accept those as read.
I second that.
Motion by Graham to accept the minutes as read, second by Let Better. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. I think we all agreed to table the RDS agreement until, I hope, the next meeting of this month, but we do need to make a decision on that. Second item, I recommend that we approve the contract agreement with the charter for the space behind the police station. I think it's a six by six or something like that. Uh, we'll pay four thousand dollars thanks to Councilman Graham. Pay four thousand dollars again.
Uh, I will make that, happily make that in the form of a motion. This spot takes up less than the parking space. So. I would like to make a motion that we, um, that we accept the contract from charter.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I think it's a very generous contract. It's definitely, you know, everybody just to go over kind of the highlights. I hear that a lot for people who's just hit the highlights. So I just want to point out paragraphs four point three D, seven point three B, and then the arbitration agreement. We would be subject to arbitration if there was anything that went wrong. But this is a very generous contract, so I can understand you're willing to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Graham to accept the contract with charter, second by Freeman. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries. Uh, also ask that, uh, formally empower me to sign the engineering contract with CDG for the Shady Bridge project. Uh, that is, fixing to get started, so we just need to formalize it.
Make that a motion. I will let you say it.
I second that.
Motion by Freeman to, uh, empower the mayor to sign the engineering contract with CDG, second by Ledbetter. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries. Uh, we also agreed to table the conversation about the insurance change. Um, again, that would be something that we, uh, need to talk about and make a decision soon.
Could you just mention that everybody, uh, all the department had signed off on that, remember, if they were, I think there's only two employees that had concerns. Is that not correct, Judy?
Uh.
Well, yeah, but now that we have some others that have some concerns.
Okay, yeah, okay. Things change, John.
It does.
Maybe this is something that we can talk about at the next workshop.
Yeah, can we make that? Because I have, well, it's not me, but an employee has expressed grave concerns. And I, I don't feel comfortable voting yea when she is very, she is.
I have made a copy of our present plan and this new plan and the benefits, so you can compare. And I've got all the totals and the numbers for, for you to look over.
There's some added benefits. Uh, drug card, this thing is, is one that's real popular. Um, every town and including the county committee and everybody in the county's on this state-run plan. Significant savings for the city after the employee on the Fama plan. The city paid eighty percent match on that. So, but like I said, uh, it's not unanimous, but it's, it's something that's to flesh out and a decision made.
I just, I guess I just want to know what the, since this has been handed out, I want to know what the issues are. I'll reach out to that employee as well. But I, I just want to make sure that employees don't feel like we're just, just trying to save money and not thinking about their insurance needs. So.
Our, our, our next workshop, it should be enough of a timetable for us to discuss this? Or is it something that we need to try to do?
Are we going to pass it? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 no. When we discuss it, is it, is the workshop going to be enough time for us to do it?
I think so. To flesh out the issue at the next time.
And if not.
Then it's just a passage of resolution to.
If, if we can't, if we have lingering questions, if we cannot get it all done at the next workshop, we can always schedule one the following week, the workshop. I'd rather not.
You have to, if we're going to go into effect, we've got to do it on, well, first of November, is that right? Yeah. We've got to decide.
Yeah, it would, we would have the, uh, option after the next council meeting, there'll be, there'll be a time where next week we have a, a, a workshop. I'd rather just, uh, fail to flesh it out, uh, the workshop.
I really would encourage you to read it and try to make a decision by the next council meeting.
Ten-four. That's the teacher's table.
And Holt's, okay.
Uh, next item, uh, got an origination agreement, uh, with the First Bank of South. Again, just handling, uh, ACH transactions with our sewer and sanitation billing. Uh, ask that you empower to sign that agreement and we continue as is.
I second that.
Second by Holt, uh, or motion by Holt, excuse me, uh, second by Ledbetter. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries. What did we decide on the DOT agreement? Um, I make a motion that we, um, after the meeting with the DOT guy on Thursday, I make a motion that if we're on the state right away, we proceed with the contract with our attorney and, and, uh, Mr. Bear. Uh, proceed to get this signed with their, if it's not on the state right away, then we proceed with our attorney to write an agreement with Mr. Love, but I'll refuse sign on his property and then take it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Holt and the second by Lingerfeld. All in favor of that say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries. The last item I've got is, uh, just passing and adopting the, uh, the recently approved, uh, well, not approved, but discussed, uh, budget for fiscal year fourteen. Uh, I didn't know if that was something we wanted to do tonight or, uh, the meeting or, or what, uh, fiscal year started the first.
Is there any ramifications for us doing it at the next meeting? Is there any drawback?
Not that I, not that I know of. I don't think we would experience a shutdown.
What's going to change though between now and then?
So let's just see.
I mean, we, we worked, we worked on it an entire night. I think, I don't think we're waiting.
Hours of work.
I make a motion.
Woo, you are.
I second. Poor dad, hurt somebody.
Motion, motion by Holt to approve the fiscal year fourteen budget, second by Freeman. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
And are we going to do the change order on the, on the, on the?
Yeah, once you jumbled up in there. Uh, yeah, I recommend we accept the change order for the Tom Bevel payment property.
I make that motion.
And then motion by Ledbetter and second by Holt. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Uh, well, we have decided to, um, table the sewer upgrades. And so the only thing that I have is I would like to make a motion to declare October Dyslexia Awareness Month in the city of Rainsville.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion by Graham to accept October Dyslexia Awareness Month in the city of Rainsville, second by Lingerfeld. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries. Any other business?
Uh, no, that's all that I have for tonight.
Okay. Go ahead, that's a thank you. Melissa?
Um, okay. I would like to make my motion to authorize the mayor and clerk to open a, hold on. To open a restricted bank account for the Imagination Library until the five oh one three transfer occurs with the stipulation of our city attorney, Dara Patterson, checking into the appropriate way to do this.
That sounds bad.
Is that good?
Very, yes.
I'd like to, I'd like for Judy to read that back.
Verbatim, please.
Just second it.
I'll second it.
Motion, uh, motion by Ledbetter to open the Imagination Library account, second by Freeman. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Okay, I make a motion that, um, two of our fire department computers be upgraded. We don't know the exact amount, but it would probably be under five hundred dollars that we're looking at out, uh, the fire department as a fund.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ledbetter to upgrade some fire department computers, second by Lingerfeld. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no.
I mean, you, no.
It's been a bad day.
It was a, it was a yay, but.
Yeah, sorry, we got it.
Motion carries.
This is just.
Okay.
Okay, um, I would like to make a motion to make Willie Wright's, Willie Wright's new title to be captain and pay rate at eleven fourteen on the current pay scale per hour. Um, that will be in effect starting the pay week of October fourteenth. I'm going to do this separately.
October the fourth.
Uh-huh, that's under, right?
I'll second.
Motion by Ledbetter and second by Lingerfeld. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Um, I make a motion that Grant Wood's new title be acting captain pending Summerford, Derek Summerford's, um, return. Um, with his pay being at eleven fourteen, same situation, going by our pay scale, um, in effect October fourteenth, two thousand thirteen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ledbetter and second by Lingerfeld. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Um, I make a motion that Derek Husky's title be the firefighter and his pay will be eleven oh five starting October fourteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Second that motion.
Motion by Ledbetter and second by Graham. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
I make a motion to ask him, ever hard, purchase, um, three lots for the Tom Bevel Center for an office and a storage closet for two hundred nineteen dollars.
Second that motion.
Motion by Ledbetter and second by Graham. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Um, I make a motion that we, as the city allow, our city attorney will allow pay for our city attorney to go to the municipal law conference at Orange Beach, October twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ledbetter and second by Lingerfeld. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Um, and there was discrepancy on the last minutes on whether I specified at the, the meeting that we hired Derek Patterson as our city attorney and city prosecutor. So, um, Mr. Judy has asked me to clean that up and make a motion that we hired, appoint, excuse me, appoint Derek Patterson as our city prosecutor.
I second that motion.
Motion by Ledbetter to appoint, uh, Patterson as the city prosecutor, second by Graham. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
And then when everything gets done, when you're going through executive session. That's all I have.
Graham?
End it.
Uh, got one item. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, pay the bill at Laney Electric for twenty-nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, uh, for the repair in the city park.
I second that.
Power, a power panel.
Second that motion.
Motion by Lingerfeld to make some city park repairs, second by Graham. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
We need to make a motion to pay the bills?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and pay the monthly bills?
I second that.
Motion by Graham to pay the monthly bills, second by Ledbetter. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss legal matters.
I will second that motion.
Yeah. Motion by Ledbetter to go into executive session on, uh, the legal issues, second by Graham. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.